Recording in progress.
Thank you. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Can we have roll call?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Wal.
Here.
Mayor Matt Tomoto-Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore. Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
Rory's online. I'm moving him over to a panelist.
There he is.
Rory, can you hear us for roll call?
Yeah, thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate it.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. So next will be the public comment. Do we have anyone sign up for public comment?
No one signed up in person or online, and written comments were handed out to you.
We have one. Did everyone take a look at that one? Okay. So next will be the city manager's report, and is that going to be Carolyn?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. Community members have an update for you tonight. First of all, I wanted to let you know that several of the leadership staff and our events coordinator have met with community leaders interested in pursuing a summer event to replace the Tour de Terrace. There's more conversations happening next week, and we will share more details as soon as we have them. But just wanted to let you know that there's an organized group working together trying to formulate a plan for the summer. Let's see, yesterday, we had our 2022 State Audit Entrance Conference. Yesterday was the deadline for our Long Range Financial Sustainability Task Force consultant proposals, and we had seven of them. So over the next week, we'll be reviewing them and doing some interviews. As a reminder, next Wednesday night here at City Hall at 6:00, we will be having a community conversation that is open to the public, and we hope that you'll join us to learn more about the city and that we can learn more about you. We are working hard to prepare the final details of our raise grant application that we plan to submit early next week, and that is for the Main Street project. Also, we had our Mount Lake Terrace Community Academy advertised about a week and a half ago. It was filled in three days, and we are getting ready to send out letters to all of the folks who applied, welcoming them to the academy. So that will be coming shortly. And that's all I have. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? So we have so much interest now in that academy. I hope we have another one after this. We'll see how successful this one is. So next week at this time, is that part of the academy that we're meeting here?
No, the community academy on Wednesday night at 6:00 is for, that's part of our community conversations.
Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. And just for folks, in case they're getting confused with all the community that we're building, the community conversations on Wednesday, you don't have to apply. Anybody can come and show up, and there will be an opportunity to share thoughts and hear others' thoughts. And it's separate from the community academy, right?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Murray.
All right. Possibly we'll fill up this. Oh, it's Councilmember Sonmore.
Can I just ask, what direction did the council give on Tour de Terrace? And how are the plans going forward? I heard there was a meeting last Tuesday or the Tuesday before, and there's a group of people that were gathered, but I don't know the ramifications of the budget. I don't know what we're talking about. I know there was an interview done, but we don't have a whole lot to go on.
This was a group who is interested in hosting the event, and this would not be a city event. We did express council's interest in preserving the Seafair Parade, and that seems to be something they're interested in doing as well. I think they're interested in doing many of the components that were part of the event, but the event name will not be handed down to the next producer of the event. And so there will also be, so there'll be new branding, and there may be some slightly different components here and there, but I think overall, the group is interested in maintaining a lot of the activities that already occurred.
I'm asking too, because I heard there were two identities that were wanting the event, so I don't know which one got it. And we do do a lot of in-kind services to those events. So I was wondering, is that still on the table?
So we aren't choosing anyone. This is a group that is just coming to us for information about how to put on a special event. This is all community-driven. The city is not, at this point in time, you know, part of the driving force for that, other than to help people get organized. And when they submit their special event permit, that is when we'll talk about what the city's contributions may or may not be.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. And so next is the proclamation for the Lunar New Year, and I have it right here, and I would like to invite. There you are.
All right. So today, we want to celebrate Lunar New Year. I'm going to read the proclamation, and I'm going to present it to Lena Lee from the Edmonds Lunar New Year Committee. And here it is. Lunar New Year. Whereas, the Lunar New Year, also known as Tet in the Vietnamese culture, is one of the biggest holidays in many East Asian cultures, and is celebrated by billions of people around the world and in the city of Mount Lake Terrace. And whereas, this city is home to many community members that celebrate Lunar New Year, including Vietnamese, Chinese, Korean. And whereas, Lunar New Year is a cultural celebration of the new moon, of the lunar calendar year. It is also the onset of spring in many regions of the world, so it is time to mark the beginning of a new planting season. And whereas, there are many ways in which Lunar New Year is celebrated among the various cultures. Many people begin with spring cleaning prior to the holidays, and there are family gatherings with symbolic foods that represent health and longevity, prosperity, family togetherness, happiness, and progress. There are often festivals, dragon dances, decorations reflecting spring and prosperity, and gifting of lucky money to children. And whereas, the city values our diversity and encourages residents to learn about each other's traditions and cultures to expand our understanding of one another. And whereas, the city also encourages our community to attend the Multicultural Association of Edmonds New Year event on February 1st. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Kyoko Matsumoto-Wright, on behalf of Mount Lake Terrace City Council, to hereby proclaim January 29th, 2025, to February 12th, 2025, as Lunar New Year, proclaimed by the city of Mount Lake Terrace on January 23rd, 2025. And here you are. Did you want to say something about this?
Yeah. I'd like to extend a thank you to the city of Mount Lake Terrace and Carolyn Hope for inviting me to your meeting and allowing me to receive this proclamation. Unfortunately, my other board members could not attend, so it's just me. But on behalf of everyone, thank you so much for supporting our community event. We are so glad that we're able to put on an event that brings the community together and to be able to showcase the diversity of our very much connected communities. So while we have always celebrated in Edmonds, we have always looked forward to bringing together everyone who can come to Edmonds to celebrate with us. Thank you so much. Oh, yes. I have a poster for our community event that is happening February 1st. I'll leave this with you. We are doing a free community event at the Edmund Center for the Arts. Also, there will be a market being hosted by us and the city of Edmonds, which will also be free for everyone to attend. We intend to do a lion dance at the theater as well as the market. And then, should you also be interested, we are doing an evening benefit at the Cascadia Art Museum, which will allow us to fundraise so that we can continue keeping the community event free for everyone to attend. Thank you so much for having me here tonight.
Is the market very similar to a night market?
Yes. We have always hoped to run the market late. Unfortunately, this just has not worked out. But from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., it'll be very much, very similar to a night market. There will be vendors. We've got a few food vendors. We're very excited. I don't have the full list of food market vendors, but we're very excited. I like to joke about this. There's a gentleman who makes amazing pickles, and he brings hot dogs to markets that he goes to to serve with his pickle. So I'm super excited for that. But thank you so much.
Everybody? Okay. So every once in a while, we have fun things. Well, we have fun things almost every time. And the prospect of a night market is going to hopefully make you happy. All right. So next is the presentation by the Foundation for Edmonds School District on Workforce Development Partnership. And Deborah Brandy. Brandi?
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here and to present about the foundation and our partnership that we enjoyed this last year with the city of Mount Lake Terrace. It's just been a growing partnership over the years, and this year, we had many ways that we helped to support our children and our families in the Edmonds School District. I'm only, in this presentation, just focusing on the areas where we partnered, not necessarily organization-wide. I did provide council members with an annual report that reflects the organization as a whole. So we partnered with the city of Mount Lake Terrace in three specific ways this last year. Our 16th Annual Monster Mad Dash 5K event, which was held at, I forget which park it was, but. Ballenger, thank you. Our Summer Meals Program at Bicentennial Park, and our On the Job Training Program. So our Celebrate Schools Monster Mad Dash, it was our 16th year of hosting the event. And we almost didn't have it this last year because we couldn't find a venue. In years past, originated in Edmonds, and then we had the opportunity to move it to the city of Linwood. There's so much construction in Linwood, we couldn't find a safe route for our children and families. And so we just were going to let it go, and we have a new staff person who happens to live in Mount Lake Terrace, and we were evaluating fall activities and just, hey, why don't we just continue with the 5K? Let's look at the city of Mount Lake Terrace. I'm like, city of Mount Lake Terrace? I never thought about that. And so we reached out to your staff to see if we could have the event here. And I have to tell you, they were so cooperative and so friendly, and they did everything they could to make the event possible for us, and it was probably our best event that we have had since before the pandemic. It was back to the levels and the feel of the event before the pandemic, and it was amazing. We had over 1,400 participants that came out in costume and ran and walked and played with us. We had 38 teams that registered to participate, and we distribute 50% of the net proceeds to our participating schools in the form of classroom grants and school ed grants, and we distributed $33,000 to our participating schools. It's the most amount of money that we've given away to our schools in any of our events. So super proud of that, and just want to share some pictures. These are our MCs of the event. This is Dorian Lair from the Snohomish County Soccer Foundation, and then Chanelle Amos, who's a board member for the foundation, and she works for Swedish Providence, Providence Swedish, this group of the runners. I wish we had an aerial of the runners because it was really cool to see 1,400 people cross the beginning, the start line, and then the finish line. This happens to be Andrew Cuomo, who is the videographer at Mount Lake Terrace High School, videographer teacher. And then, Lyndale, it's a competition. So our schools that have the most registered participants get the bragging rights for an entire year and a coveted trophy. This is Lyndale Elementary. They won with the most registered participants in the history of the event. We're looking forward to next year's event, which we have already submitted our application. It's always the first Saturday in October, so we're looking forward to round two here in Mount Lake Terrace, and we're excited for that partnership. We also have our drum lines that come and participate. This is specifically Mount Lake Terrace High School Drum Line. And we also had our cheer squads and dance teams that were out for the event. So it's a great community celebration, a way to bring our kids and our families together around supporting schools and education in our community. So that's our 5K event. And these are our lovely ladies on the dance team. And then our On the Job Training Program. So last year, the city awarded the foundation $48,000 in New York ARPA dollars for on-the-job training development, employment development. We had 29 students from Mount Lake Terrace High School that benefited from the program and who participated in paid internships at 21 employer sites. So the way the program works, our On the Job Training Program, it's really targeted toward our students who are pursuing post-vocational career pathways. We enroll the students at the end of their sophomore year, so the beginning of their senior year. They're co-enrolled in dual-credit courses with an emphasis in a vocational career pathway. The summer between their junior and senior year, they work in a paid internship. That is a credit-bearing course for them, so it works towards high school credits. And then their senior year, they continue second-year enrollment in dual-credit coursework. They're, at the end of their senior year, eligible for a $2,000 scholarship with the foundation to finish their certificate program if they didn't already complete that while they were in school their junior and senior year. The host employer continues to provide paid internship for the students after their senior year. The goal then with the program is that we now have students that are career-ready. They hopefully have a certificate. They have job experience. They have a resume, and they're ready to hit the workforce and get out there and be productive for our businesses. These are some pictures, these are the industries that we focused this last year. Probably continue to focus this next year, but construction, videography, public works and public safety, manufacturing, technology, food services and catering, healthcare, fashion, and EMT services. This is a photo of a student in the public works, working on a project actually with the city of Linwood, but out in the community working. The student to the right, it was in the EMT program with Snohomish County Fire District 1. And then again, on the left is a student in the construction program with BN Builders. And then here, we have videography with Reef Commerce. The company is in Edmonds. These are Mount Lake Terrace students who participated in this program. They got to do onsite filming and editing and be on location. It was really great experiences for all of the kids in the program. And these are kids that were participating in manufacturing at Mechanical Minds, or Mind Mechanical, I believe, is the organization. And then I want to, oops, I'm going to go back. Oops. Sorry. I'm going to go back. I thought I had gotten a picture of this group of kids. They did a, you know, the Beatles picture when they're on Abbey Road and they're all walking. They got a great picture of the kids on Abbey Road, so I apologize. I thought I had included this, but I'll send that off to Jeff Knighton so he can send it out to you guys so you can see that. It was really, really cool. And then Summer Meals. We have been partnering with the city for many years now on our Summer Meals Program. It's a part of our nursery network program. Our nursery network program is designed to feed our children during our school times, long summer breaks, winter breaks, weekends. We have hosted Bicentennial Park for many years. At Bicentennial Park alone, we served over 1,400 lunch meals to our students that were playing with us. It's designed to be a summer camp. It's the only free summer camp in all of South Snohomish County. Our kids come and play with us for three hours a day, and they have an hour of healthy activity. They have an educational component, and they eat lunch with us. This last year, and even the year before, we distributed every day additional meals, like individual breakfast servings and milk servings and snacks that students could take home with them. This last year, we gave every student a weekend meal kit so they could take that home over the weekend and have nourishment till they came back Monday morning. In total, of all of our summer meal sites, over 5,200 lunch meals were served. And at Mount Lake Terrace, we had anywhere from 39 to 81 children every day playing with us and enjoying their summertime. So what we have are some pictures of kids in the park playing. This was a LED activity where they're having some kind of educational component. We have different providers that come in every day and mostly volunteer their time to give presentations to the kids or provide an educational opportunities. On the left are kids that are playing math games. So try to build in math and reading. We have Snowell Library Vamp, mobile library van that comes out once a week where students can check out library books and stay on top of reading. On the right are construction kits, building kits that we got donated from Home Depot. I'm not sure what they were building there, but they had a construction project that they got to create and take home with them. And then Snohomish County Fire District 1 came and played with the kids. They had a water fight, which you can see on the left, and then they brought out some of their equipment that the kids could kind of test and see, you know, how heavy things were and how to use, you know, a vice grip or an emergency claw or whatever. And they love it. They absolutely love it. We had the K-9 units out. We have different community partners that come out and play with the kids, health and wellness, and different subjects. Each week is a different theme. And the robotics kids. So we had kids from the robotics teams to come out. Mount Lake Terrace High School has an amazing robotics team. We anticipate that they're going to go to, possibly could go to Nationals this year along with Linwood High School. So we'll see how well they do in their competition season, which is coming around the corner. And then, you know, we are a foundation. We do fundraising. That's what we do. We bring in the bacon for the Edmonds School District to fill in the gap where there's a lack of funding and to fill in or support our students in learning. So our next biggest fundraising event is our annual breakfast event on Friday, February 28th. And I know Jeff Knighton is going to host a table, and I think Councilmember Woodard is as well. And so hopefully, many of you will be able to come out and join us and hear some of our amazing students talk about their programs that they get to benefit from the foundation. So those were the ways that we've partnered this last year, and I would welcome any questions or comments that you might have.
Do we have anyone? Councilmember Murray?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Deborah. Appreciate you being here and sharing all of the good work that you're doing, as well as just, you know, all of the work you do, not just for Mount Lake Terrace, but the entire school district, particularly the job readiness. I will say, as somebody who's spent a lot of my career hiring folks and trying to find the right, the people with the right skills for the jobs that are out there, I love all of the work that you are doing and all of the creativity that these kids get to exercise and trying new things and seeing what might be a good fit for them. So I just think that's phenomenal and appreciate you sharing more about it. It's super fun to see. And so not specifically a Mount Lake Terrace question, but since you're here, I know one of the things that you, that the foundation did this last year was with the cuts to the school budget, and particularly to extracurriculars. I know the foundation stepped in to help with music funding and was kind of the source of, you know, where to go for that, for people to make contributions to help continue some of those services. Can you just talk a little bit about where that stands in terms of, you know, we were able to maintain some of the music services for kids across the district this year. Is that something where we anticipate there being additional fundraising here this year to support next year, or where do things stand with that?
Yeah. So those are great questions. So to start, the foundation raised about $280,000 to fund. We launched the campaign, the Save the Arts campaign. Our intention was to raise $1.5 million to save arts across grades five through 12. And then, as we started to get through the nuts and bolts of the costs of retaining classes, and really, the biggest costs the district have are salaries. That's 89% of the district's budget are salaries and everything that goes along with the salaries, right? And so there's just a small portion that the district encumbers for overhead. And so when we broke down the numbers and looked at what we could afford and what really was realistic, we eliminated a fifth-grade band because it was almost $1 million just for a fifth-grade band across all 20 elementary schools. And then it came down to the arts. And we only had six weeks to raise approximately about $600,000 for that. And we did fall short, but there was another foundation that stepped in and contributed about $300,000. So together, we saved both visual and performing arts. So their funding focused on drawing, art, drama, some of those classes. We focused then just on music. We saved seven music classes across our middle schools and high schools. And at Mount Lake Terrace, we're supporting their clinicians throughout the entire year. So Darren Falls, the music director there, he opted to take larger class sizes to keep the kids intact and to keep the program going. And he came back to us this fall and said, "I can't sustain this in the way that it is. There are too many kids to try to teach music and with only one instructor. Would you consider funding clinicians?" And so we went back to the district and said, "Hey, how much of this funding do you really need for our teachers?" Because we funded at the highest level possible, right? So that we weren't caught off guard with a funding shortfall. So we estimated conservatively high, and what is it that is the actual? And we ended up with enough wiggle room that we could take some of that funding and divert it over to Mount Lake Terrace High School for clinicians. And so every single middle school had a course or two that was funded. And then all of the, Edmonds Woodway, Linwood High School, and Meadowdale High School had classes saved, and then Mount Lake Terrace High School were funding clinicians. So we honestly, there's so many, there's two parts to the answer to this second part of your question. Let me take a step back. Tam Osborne, who's the Director of Visual and Performing Arts in the district, shared with us recently that the funding that we were able to provide for the district for these classes really truly saved our music programs. It really did. And it has made the difference in our music programs. And it has made the difference in our music programs going forward for our kids, both at middle school and high school level. Proud to share, if you don't already know, that Mont Lake Terrace High School Jazz One was selected for Essential Ellington. One of four Washington State high schools selected for Essential Ellington out of 30 high schools nationwide. Very prestigious. I'd like to think that our supporting, the clinician support helped with that. But we have some amazingly talented students who are really dedicated and passionate about music education, as is Darren Fall, and that is reflective of their accomplishments. So congratulations to Mont Lake Terrace High School for their being selected for Essential Ellington. This next year is really a lot, there are so many unknowns. And there's a lot of speculation. We know the district is preparing for budget shortfalls. We don't know what's going to happen at the state legislative level. A lot that needs to be done there to fix how public education is funded. And this is a bargaining year for our district. I don't know how that bargaining is going to play out, right? Those are the two big variables, not knowing how they'll play out. We do anticipate, I don't know, that our state legislature won't fully fund or solve the funding problem for education and that there will be a need to step in and support. And so we, and we haven't shared this with our board yet, although I almost sent a board update today, but I will get that out. We are working on a campaign. We are going to work on round two because we do feel that there's a fairly strong probability that there will, with the lack of, the district is facing another significant budget shortfall, not knowing what the state legislature is going to do in terms of funding, more fully funding education. We expect there will be a shortfall and there might be a need to continue to fund these courses and more. And so last year, we only had a six-week runway. And we've come back to the district and said, "Okay, I think we're going to run this, but we need longer. I need until the end of May." And they said yes. And so we're working on campaign materials right now. We have a four-part campaign that we're going to run. We just met with a videographer yesterday, pulling together probably a video, some mail materials, you know, a mail campaign, phone calling, and then some events that will take place in May. And so more details to follow. I don't have anything to present today. We're working on collateral in our case for support of why we need to continue to do this. And it's quite possible, because it's a two-year binarium budget cycle, depending on where our state legislature lands in funding education. It could be a two-year binarium cycle before a full resolution is implemented. And so this is probably round two, and there could be a round three, just to bridge this until hopefully our state legislature says, "Yeah, the arts should be part of basic education. Yes, this is important to us for our children." And so we'll see. There's just a lot at play, but we want to be ahead of the game instead of trying to be behind the eight ball and try to catch up.
Thank you. I so appreciate hearing that there's conversations going on. And again, appreciate the work that you did do to quickly step in and try to fill that need. And I won't get on my soapbox on, you know, why we should fully fund education and how important it is. But I think we've talked a lot about, you know, youth and youth, you know, violence and the challenges with youth, you know? And I think we can, you know, talk about how to proactively invest in our youth or we can react, you know, when unfortunately those investments aren't made. And so I appreciate that you are looking for solutions to fill the gap where there is one, and it does make a difference. So I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation. Lots of things you are doing. I really liked the vocational items you talked about for the junior and senior in high school students. And like the idea that the food and the education in the park. And particularly like when you talked about saving seven classes in music, because that's kind of where I'm at. I taught elementary music for, let's see, 18 years in a classroom for 16. But, and my son went to Mont Lake Terrace High School and also went to the Essential Ellington. Yes. So really sounds like you're doing a great job. So thank you for being here and presenting this.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to chime in, say thank you for the presentation, but also say you referenced three partnerships here, but there's a fourth that you kind of alluded to, which is I have the honor of serving on your board.
You do.
Currently, you're president of your board, as you know that. I say that to say that I am actually just walking in a legacy. Our previous city manager actually served as, served on the board as well as served as president of the foundation, which is a parlay to say, it'd be interesting to see if someone from the city was willing to step in and consider joining this board. We've had that active role in the past. And in the last handful of years, have had a quasi-person, myself. I really represent VOA, but of course, represent the city wherever I go as well. But to have an actual dedicated person would be interesting to see if you could rekindle that relationship. For anyone on council who's interested, and anyone who's listening who's interested, because it's not just about the city, it's a wonderful opportunity to bridge a different gap, which is connecting people to their passion, but through their actions, be it their money or their volunteerism. The money part's pretty straightforward. You gave an example this breakfast. The volunteerism, as an example, is during the holidays, over the winter break specifically, it rains, sleet, or snow, we become the U.S. Postal Service on some levels, perhaps dangerously. But we deliver holiday meals to families, which is a longer story for another day. But just to point out that there are actual ways to get actually involved, be it, again, through your finances or through your sweat equity. But it's also a wonderful collection of community members who are just as dedicated in various capacities that you might not interact with in any other circumstance. So just putting that out there as well. But again, honored to serve on the board, to see a lot of this work in live time, and it'll also be just a part of it to help keep moving it forward. So again, thank you for your time tonight.
You're welcome. And if I may just add to what Steve said, we are currently feeding probably about 500 homeless kids per week, and our numbers have been steadily increasing since the pandemic. We thought after the pandemic, it might settle down a little bit. We were feeding about, I can't remember, 480 kids per week during the pandemic. And the numbers have stayed high primarily because of the cost of inflation, the cost of groceries, and families can't afford to buy groceries. They're making harder choices now than during the pandemic. And so this year, we delivered with our weekend meal kits, holiday meals to our 500 students. They go out on Thursday afternoons, and it's a way to keep our children nourished over the weekends and our families. And we're always looking for volunteer delivery drivers. So if you have a couple of hours on a Thursday morning or Thursday afternoon, and you would be interested in delivering weekend meal kits, we would welcome your assistance and volunteerism. We also have teams that come in and bag on Tuesday nights, weekend meal kits. So usually from 6:30 to about 8 o'clock, we have a group of people that will come in and they'll assemble the weekend meal kits for about, not quite, 500 kids every week and send those out. And then we do, every month, we do seven pop-up pantries. And one of our largest pantries is at Mont Lake Terrace High School with the neighbors, Concern for Neighbors Food Bank. We partner with all of our food banks at our pop-ups, but we're always looking for volunteers there. So if you have time, once a month, to come work at a pop-up pantry and help distribute food staples and household staples and hygiene, and feminine hygiene kits to our families, we'd also would welcome that as well.
All right, anyone else? Okay. I don't see anyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
You're welcome.
All right, so next on our agenda is the presentation of the third quarter police department report with our police chief, Pete Caw, and commanders Mike Haynes and Scott King.
I think I got it. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro-Chairman Council. For those in the audience, I'm Pete Caw. I'm the police chief. I have seated next to me Commander Scott King, and next to him, Commander Mike Haynes. While he's getting the computer ready, I'll give you a little summary of the report. This year's third quarter report includes third quarter statistical data, such as calls for service, traffic stops, arrests, DUIs, with comparisons to 2023 statistical data. There's a decrease in vehicle fouls and a marked increase in DUI arrests. This is compared to the third quarter in 2023. The report also outlines training highlights with a video from PIT training. PIT training is pursuit intervention training. We just underwent that last month, two months ago. There's nothing quite so much fun as driving police cars fast, safely, and learning how to run into other cars and stop them safely. So that was very, very entertaining and enlightening training. We're taking, as a state, the profession has taken a little more aggressive approach toward fleeing vehicles in light of new changes in the law. The report also dives into a case study of a drive-by shooting. The case study shows how detectives develop a suspect, gather evidence, and make an arrest. You notice there's two suspects in this instance. One is identified, one is not. The one that was not identified was a juvenile at the time of the offense. We don't identify those folks until much later on. She has since become an adult. Anyway, let's start with our goals velocity. I like to keep this in front of you. It's part of our brand. It will remain part of our brand. It's the six pillars identified by President Obama in 2015. It remains part of our 21st century tweet policing goals. Building trust in legitimacy, policy and oversight, technology, social media, community policing, crime reduction, training and education, officer wellness and safety. I keep that before you. Something else I sometimes enter that I'll do again next month is Admiral Rickover's 10 Goals of Command. I don't want to give it to you every time, but that's part of our brand too, so we'll go over that again. Department goals in 2024, this is a kind of a report card of what we've done and how we've made progress. One of the goals, provide a safe community for everyone, utilize department resources effectively. We continue to use our unmanned aerial program, commonly referred to drones, to leverage technology, increase safety in the community. The program uses aerial vehicles to provide time distance and shielding, three tactics referenced in recent state legislation. And also, part of the safety is increased traffic DUI enforcement. We utilize our effective, our resources effectively by joining task forces. An example, that would be the Violent Offenders Task Force administered by the U.S. Marshals Program. I have a detective embedded in there presently. We focus on community-oriented policing and outreach, continue to utilize the embedded social worker program. You'll hear some about that from Commander King. Continue to provide outreach programs like cops and clergy. Again, Sergeant King manages that program, and he will probably be guiding, answering questions about that later. We utilize the e-bike program for community contacts. It's a bit rainy and cold right now, but in the summer, you'll see those folks out more on the bikes. We're collaboratively with regional law enforcement agencies, regional intelligence groups. I mentioned the U.S. Marshals Task Force is another example. We incorporate education, long-term solutions, strategies with enforcement. We work with other city departments to develop a clear and inviting environment. We continue to recruit and retain quality personnel, replacing retiring department members. We maintain a high standard of personnel selection, provide opportunities and challenges for personnel, push them into areas they're not comfortable in so they can grow in the profession. We focus on succession planning and developing the next generation of department leaders. We maintain auditing systems, such as accreditation, spy tech, command review of critical incidents. Any use of force is reviewed all the way up to the chief. Accreditation auditing, every four years, we undergo a complete audit from WASPIC. Every year, we do a self-audit with 12 to 15 critical policies reviewed and proofs sent into our hearing tour, what we say we're doing. Lexipol, automated policy review and update that keeps current with best practices. We operate a comprehensive and robust in-service training program. When we can, we like to have internal trainers that can train our folks in a variety of skill sets rather than send them out to extensive, expensive training. We focus on finding candidates of differing backgrounds and diverse communities. We want to remain regional leaders and set an example for modern policing. We listen to community feedback, implement changes appropriate. We update and modify policy. We develop and promptly instruct internal training programs. I just talked about that. We focus on fostering a cultural partnership with the community. We're as transparent as we can be. We recognize community support and trust as paramount to our success. We're proactive in incorporating improvements, and of course, we're fiscally responsible. Now I'll turn it over to, I believe, Commander Haynes.
Good evening. Staffing update. I'm pleased to introduce our two newest police officers, Jeff Zarnick and Vale Stroffkin. Officer Zarnick came to us as an entry-level officer, and he recently completed the academy and field training. He's currently assigned to patrol on night shift. He's actually out there tonight working. And Officer Stroffkin is our latest hire. He arrived to us as a certified entry police officer from the Seattle Police Department, and he's currently in the middle of his field training. Next, I'm going to give you an overview of the third quarter by numbers for patrol. Calls for service, community outreach contacts, reports, and traffic stops remain consistent with what we saw last year. There was a reduction in traffic infraction, infractions issued versus 2023, and a increase in citations. I just want to remind everyone that officers have discretion to issue infractions, and are encouraged to take advantage of education opportunities instead of enforcement when We saw a slight decrease in arrests during the third quarter in contrast to an uptick in domestic violence crimes and DUI arrests. In regard to the reduction in property crimes, as Chief Caw alluded to earlier, I believe the emphasis patrol has influenced these numbers, but I suspect the primary reason for the reduction is due to legislative updates pertaining to vehicle pursuits and narcotics possession from last year. Violent crimes overall remain within the range of previous years. Overall, Mont Lake Terrace continues to be a very safe community. This slide represents our community demographics, infractions issued by race, and last but not least, arrests by race. With that, I'll turn it over to Commander King. All right, so training. Officers completed the required de-escalation and patrol tactics training. Detective Sheets and Elrod attended basic homicide investigation. Sergeant Porter, Detective Sheets, and Officer Ball completed advanced SWAT training. And the entire department completed tasering, pressure, firearms training, defensive tactics training, and precision immobilization technique or PIT training. And this is a video from our PIT training.
No metal got bent, nobody got hurt. Successful.
And we were able to put together some PIT cars through grant money we had through the state, so that was kind of nice to be able to put that together. Don't want to play that again. Records in animal control. So our records unit continues to receive training from the Washington State Enforcement Information and Records Association and Washington Association of Public Records Officers. Records processed 625 cases, 48 collisions, and 148 public disclosures. Animal control processed 12 cases and four potentially dangerous dog hearings. Community outreach. The department participated in national night out in August. Community outreach. The department participated in National Night Out in August. We supported Primera and South County Fire in their safety fairs. Our embedded social worker, Holly Shelton, was a vital team member as we collaborated with King County and the Department of Transportation to mitigate a very large homeless encampment between I-5 and the Nile Golf Course. Officers continue to use our community outreach program supplies to assist those in immediate need, and Narcan was used one time in the third quarter, saving one life. Evidence technician Custer processed 351 pieces of evidence and destroyed 461 pieces. And now I have a case study of a drive-by shooting. And it's case number 24167. So, on January 3, 2024, at 9:30 p.m., officers were dispatched to a fireworks complaint with property damage at the 3600 block of 225th Place. When patrol arrived, they found bullet holes in the homeowner's vehicle and residence. After realizing the incident was a drive-by shooting instead of fireworks, patrol officers searched the street and residence for evidence. No one was injured, though a bullet which had penetrated the home struck the homeowner's 18-year-old daughter's bed just 10 inches from where she had been sleeping. The daughter named a possible female suspect who did not like her. She told officers the female suspect drives a black Mercedes. Detectives responded and contacted neighbors for video and ensuring no evidence have been overlooked. Two videos were located. Both videos captured what appeared to be a black Mercedes driving by the residence firing four rounds. The victim explained she had been talking with a male subject. The male subject's ex-girlfriend, who was identified as the female suspect, became jealous. The victim said the suspect had made comments about having a bullet with her name on it, and she had sent the victim's friend a screenshot of her Snapchat location, which was in the area of the shooting. The victim also mentioned possible involvement of one of the suspect's best friends, a male named Ocho, who the victim knew was gang-affiliated and had guns. Investigators also knew the subject from previous investigation. Ocho was quickly identified through his Instagram as a subject well-known to Mountain Lake Terrace Police and investigators. He had been most recently arrested for armed robbery and assault, for which he spent a few years in prison. He is a convicted felon and not able to possess firearms. Investigators found he had been contacted by the Snowbush County Sheriff's deputies at Alderwood Mall Middle School the evening of January 3, 2024, just after the drive-by shooting. The incident was for a report of shots fired. Shots at the Alderwood Middle School. So, deputies had been dispatched around 9:50 p.m. on January 3 to a shots complaint at the Alderwood Middle School. Deputies contacted Ocho and his girlfriend at the school. Deputies could find no evidence that shots had been fired. Mountain Lake Terrace detectives responded to the Alderwood Middle School to see if deputies may have missed something the night prior, and to see if they could find any connection to the Mountain Lake Terrace drive-by shooting. A live round was located in the middle of the parking lot where the incident occurred. This was taken into evidence. Surveillance was also collected, though it was distant and grainy. Digital investigations with the case. Instagram. Instagram is a social media platform where users can post photos, videos, and chat other users. Detectives located the suspect's Instagram account and observed she had multiple photos of a black Mercedes sedan, which appeared to match the suspect vehicle in the surveillance video. Snapchat. Snapchat is a social media platform that sends photos, videos, chats, and has local mapping feature to show where your friends are. Detectives served a search warrant on the suspect's Snapchat according, or account for mapping information, photos, videos, and chats. Snapchat evidence recovered. The suspect filmed herself driving around the night of the incident in Mountain Lake Terrace. The suspect spent, sent, or posted photographs of herself holding a semi-automatic black pistol. The suspect posted a video a couple hours before the incident with a caption referring to some female, including a threat to kill. The suspect messaged a Snapchat user saying, "I'm going to do a drive-by." Snapchat mapping showed the suspect was within 453 yards of the victim's residence just 30 seconds before the drive-by shooting. A witness to the drive-by was located and contacted by detectives. The witness was in the vehicle with the suspect during the time of the incident. The witness confirmed the female suspect was the driver and only other occupant of the vehicle. She shot all four rounds at the victim's residence. The witness also stated they were at Alderwood Middle School, and a male subject had fired a gun into the air. The suspect was arrested on July 30, 2024, in Seattle by the Pacific Northwest Violent Offenders Task Force. While in Stonewash County Jail, the suspect made many phone calls to relatives and friends. Investigators have access to all recorded phone calls, which do not include protected conversations with attorneys. During a couple of these calls, the suspect stated Ocho had fired a round at Alderwood Middle School that night. On August 14, 2024, the Snowbush County Prosecutor's Office filed formal charges on the suspect for first-degree assault with a firearm, drive-by shooting, and second-degree malicious mischief. Any questions?
Anyone? Councilmember Sonmore?
I'm assuming her face is covered up because she's a juvenile?
Yeah.
So, what happened to her?
So, formal charges were put in on her, and we're waiting on the trial.
She was charged as an adult. She turned, she became an adult in the process of all this. So, she was charged as an adult.
And have laws changed enough in the last couple of years that will make a bigger difference on if she would have done it a few years ago? I was just curious of how things may have changed.
Well, I think we can all agree that the juvenile justice system is not working the way we'd like it to. So, I think the answer to your question, if she had been charged as a juvenile, we'd be looking at considerably different penalties for things, yes.
Well, thank you for your good work. I quickly not point that out, and I was asking questions, but I, that was the first thought on my mind. Sorry, I said it last. But as always, you know, you put your life out there, and I see it, and it looks like you got hit or something, and, and I always worry about you guys, but...
I didn't hit, but that's not...
Oh, it looked a little red. Oh, sorry. I didn't mean... To, oh, ouch. I'm sorry. But, yeah, it's always interesting, because what you see on television, we always talk about this, is not exactly how things always work out. I just binge-watch Elementary, and the things that go on on that show is so different from the police work that we hear about. And, you know, this is something that, I guess, has been on my mind, because when I go on Facebook, a lot of times, people say, "Well, did you hear that gunfire? Did you hear that gunfire?" And I'm like, "What the heck is going on?" And a lot of times, it turns out to be fireworks. But it's very, at least once a month, I see it on there. And it's just something that's, another shooting yesterday in Tennessee at the schools and the lockdowns we have. And so, I'm sure your jobs are getting more intense over the years. So, just thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all. Always appreciate the updates and all of the work. And I think to follow on to Councilmember Sonmore's comment about the fireworks versus gunshots, because I do think that is an often, you know, discussed, you know, thing in our community. Do you have any guidance around, you know, how folks maybe can better identify what they're hearing, so they know when they should be reaching? I mean, I guess in theory, they could reach out, whether it was fireworks or gunfire, given that fireworks aren't legal in Mountain Lake Terrace. But obviously, if it's gunshots, you want to know and want to know quickly. So, is there, I guess, is there anything that folks can maybe keep in mind that would help them better identify those noises?
I would just recommend that if they're unsure, just call 911. Yeah, I mean, if it's, if they're, you know, it's not distinguishable, or they didn't see it visually, just call 911. Let us come out and figure it out.
Thank you. No, I think that's great advice. And I think there's been some conversations recently about, should, should we call 911? Shouldn't, and, you know, folks are discussing it on social media. And I think to your point, if, if there's a question, you guys, that's what, you, you can help figure that out versus folks trying to, trying, trying to figure it out through social media group things. So, okay, all right. Thank you for that guidance. Really appreciate it. And just thinking about, as I was gonna say, appreciate the music in the video and all of the technology you guys use. And given we just heard from the foundation, the Edmonds School District Foundation, I guess I'll put in a plug. They told us the first Saturday of October is going to be their event here in Mountain Lake Terrace next year, and that a drone shot would have been really cool. I know we have some talented drone, you know, operators here in Mountain Lake Terrace. Maybe, maybe if there's an opportunity for training at the same time, we could get them a cool shot during the event next year.
That'd be easy to do.
So, awesome.
Those guys that we call them drone pilots, they get really excited about each mission. So, giving them something to do, they'd be all over that. So, we'll, just remind us, and we'll take care of it.
Councilmember Sonmore?
I just want to say, Commander King, you were here last time. I noticed on our site that you put, on Facebook, you put out what people could donate to the police department. We had asked about that. So, thank you for following on that.
That was successful. So, that was a great suggestion, by the way. We received a lot of things that were very helpful. Yep.
Wonderful. Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you for the presentation. Love that case study. Not that I loved it, but I mean, I liked your presentation. But thank you for your service, and I know I feel safe here in Mountain Lake Terrace, and probably because, because all the service you do and take care of suspicious activity. So, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right. Oh, Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I was, it feels perfunctory, and I'm sorry, and I don't mean it to be, just really want to start off with your leadership again. Thank you. But I'm just deeply troubled by this Snapchat. You know, she started off as a minor, and now she's an adult. But I'm like, I look at this, if you don't mind pulling up Slide 30, I think we should look at that again. I appreciate her face isn't there, but I'm like, if that's not a cry of mental health, I don't know what is. I mean, did she do everything except show up at your door with cake and said, "I did it," right? I mean, every step of the way, I see someone asking for help. Who the hell are her Snapchat people? I don't, sorry, Gen X old guy here, don't remember how this one works. But I'm like, where were the people? You're telling me she's driving around, and she's posting photos? She's using threatening language? Was there any pushback? Was there anyone? Sorry, my eyes are killing me right now, because this is just making me want to cry. So, I don't think I have a question. I just, I appreciate the example, but this is messed up, man. This is not, this is not a great police example. Sorry. You guys did your job great. This is not what this is. I, you know, again, I just want to put that out there, like, wow, man. This is not landing the way it's landing on some of us, I guess. This is crazy. Sorry to use that word, but it, like, where are we going with this? So, I don't know. Just, just, mental health people, I don't know. We might want to look at our budget and how we're doing that, interacting with kids. This woman is driving around. She was a child, and now she's a woman. Listen to my language. This was a child driving around at the time doing this, literally posting a photo of herself, like, we can't figure out who you are. But again, where were your friends?
The digital media world is definitely still the Wild West, and we get caught up in, you know, not worrying about censorship and the First Amendment, but when people are crying out for help like this and threatening the rest of us, I think it's incumbent upon whoever's looking at stuff to raise their hand and say something. But unfortunately, that, that's not the current philosophy in some circles, which is most, most tragic.
Okay. Well, we know, we know we have a lot of things that we need to work on, and that's one of them. So, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Oh. Mayor, I have a quick question. Apologies for...
Councilmember Payton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Chief. And just to follow up on what Councilmember Woodard's highlighting, I totally agree. And I know that in the past, you know, it's probably been, well, some folks have told me when, when exactly this program ran, but I know that we're like evening, sort of anti-gang focused efforts, so that, you know, kids had a place to, you know, to, to go, you know. I think back then, it was, was organized around like sports and like just a place to hang out. And I'm blanking on the, the name of this program, but just wondering if, if there's been any conversations about, you know, ways to, to provide, you know, outlets, services, you know, and, and, you know, reason, reason for kids not to be driving around with, with handguns, et cetera. And I know this goes, the, the needs for these, these folks, these kids, you know, go a lot deeper than, than just like, you know, what, what I'm asking about. But I would, would appreciate the understanding, sort of what, what, what's going on in the school districts, what's, what's going on out in the community to, to address gang violence. And, you know, appreciate that, that you all have to respond to it, but, but, you know, understanding what sort of programming is, is out there, what, what efforts are, are being made would, would be really helpful. Because I, I know that, you know, you are not the only police department responding to, to gang violence in, in the South King County, North Seattle area. So, maybe that's follow-up for another time, but that's, it's completely concerning and terrible. So, thank you.
You're, I think you're referring to a program, it was called the Neutral Zone years ago. I've been here long enough to remember, remember working off-duty there. It was a brainchild of former Chief John Turner, many years ago. We're talking about three chiefs ago now, one of my mentors, actually. But that program was very successful, held at one of the local schools, and we had off-duty officers working there, volunteering, and also working in an off-duty capacity. Very successful, brought in tons of kids every night, every, I think it was once a week. There's been a lot of conversation about that. We probably had to have more conversations. It would be a, a great first step. It all, it all comes back to money, time, and, and resources. But I think we have, we have all three of those. It's just a question of how to use it effectively. And I think that's, that would be a huge step in the right direction. We need to have more conversations about it. I agree.
Thanks, Chief.
All right. Councilmember Sonmore?
This might be inappropriate at this time, because you're, you're not left one, but left one funding is being looked at to help balance the, the state's budget. And to me, that seems a little inappropriate. And so, I'm wondering, when you, you have any, say in Olympia, that when those funds do come to an end, when the last person passes, I believe those funds should go not to the state, but back to the cities that paid into it. And so, I'm hoping that maybe you could drop that plug whenever you can, because we're the ones that are paying for that over, you know, every month, instead of it going back to the state to balance a budget when they do have monies coming in. So, I just want to throw that out there.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Well, we have a lot of work ahead, and thank you very much for coming tonight. So, next is the presentation on the Code Compliance Activities and Rental Program with our Community and Economic Development Director, Chrissy Osborne, and Code Compliance Officer, Laura Stevenson. Is this the first time you're going to be up here, talking to us? Thank you very much for coming.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of council. My name is Laura Stevenson, and I'm the Code Compliance Officer for the city. and I'm the Code Compliance Officer for the city. I'm here to present an update for Code Compliance since it moved from the Police Department over to CED. So primarily from May through December of last year. We'll cover Code Compliance statistics, rental business licenses, the steps taken from violation to correction, voluntary and non-voluntary compliance, significant cases, and direction. So I began in this role in May of 2024, after six years as a maintenance worker in Public Works. This is actually a photo I took from on top of our water tower.
Wow.
As of May, there was backlog of 97 open cases. I've since closed 60 of those. Subsequently, I opened 106 cases and closed 43 of those. So in total, I've worked 203 cases and closed 103 of them. 100 of them rolled over into this year. This, this chart shows our code cases by type. Some cases involve multiple violations. Over half of the cases were primarily building code violations, most of which relate to Building or missing permit cases often involve flipped houses, remodels, additions, demolitions, accessory structures, new roofs, garage or carport conversions, and missing business licenses. This is a photo that started off, uh, with a, a case for a raccoon infestation, and it eventually evolved into an illegal demolition. Nuisance violations are common and typically involve overgrown vegetation, vehicles on lawns, trash, collapsing structures, infestations, or attractive nuisances. In this case, uh, there's an attractive nuisance, which would be the oven, since potentially a child could be trapped in it. Zoning cases are less frequent, but often the most challenging to resolve. Examples include legal to illegal non-conforming structures, setback issues, and tree or vegetation removal in critical areas. Cases involving unsafe conditions are the top priority. They often involve multiple violations across different areas of the code, including uninhabitable houses, vacant buildings, collapsed structures, tenants' sheds, and exposed hazards. Rental business licenses have been required since 2012. CED launched an inspection program to ensure life safety for rented properties. This city has encountered cases where tenants were living in illegal ADUs, garages, sheds, closets, or even tents. In some instances, tenants were instructed to use outdoor sanitation buckets. I have spared you those photos. Many properties have lacked functional or updated smoke detectors, along with other critical fire safety issues. Recently, there's been increased focus, momentum in addressing these concerns. This chart outlines the process from violation to correction, highlighting the multiple opportunities responsible parties have before cases escalate to fines or abatement by the city. The vast majority of corrections are handled voluntarily. Just going over the notices that we send out to people. A pre-enforcement notice, or pen, is a letter sent to the responsible party for minor violations. It serves as a written warning typically for issues like overgrown vegetation or vehicles parked on Along the same lines, a voluntary compliance agreement, or VCA, notifies the responsible party of existing violations and offers the opportunity to correct them without further escalation. This is usually the first written notice sent to residents. If the VCA is signed and returned, a notice of violation is not used. That's why in the previous slide, there was a dashed line going from voluntary, sorry, going from the voluntary compliance agreement to the final notice, because we would skip the notice of violation. A notice of violation, or NOV, is issued for uncorrected violations after pen or unsigned VCA deadlines have passed. It could also serve as the initial written notice for urgent or hazardous violations, and may be used for properties with related past cases. It outlines possible fees and remedies. All reasonable extension requests are granted. An NOV can be appealed to the hearing examiner within 14 days of service. Final notice outlines the next steps for fines, assessments, and abatement. It serves as the last opportunity to make corrections before further escalation. This is sent out after the notice of violation or signed VCA deadline has lapsed. We've had three cases appealed to the hearing examiner, with rulings in the city's favor each time. Since May of last year, seven code cases have proceeded to litigation. One case involving a zoning issue with an illegal structure was decided in the city's favor, and the remaining six are still pending in Superior Court. Assessments are issued for daily fines past correction deadlines. Recovery of city attorney fees, and Sonhamish County recording fees were applicable. Four assessments were recently issued for open cases with pending fines. All four were appealed to the city manager's designee, Kristy Osborne. Three of the four property owners made progress after receiving their assessments before their scheduled appeal. Abatements are considered a last resort, implemented only after all attempts at voluntary compliance have been exhausted. Abatements are typically carried out with a court order, though the city retains the option to abate as outlined in the code. So this is one of the properties that I abated. Um, the photo on the left shows what it looked like on my first visit, and the photo on the right would be after everything was removed. Uh, he missed every opportunity to make the voluntary corrections. Um, Hillary took the case to court, and we were able to remove everything on the left side there. You may recall this property, which has been abated multiple times. On this occasion, I was informed that someone was living in a makeshift shelter in the backyard. We have an ongoing court order allowing access to the property for abating nuisance violations. I coordinated with the Police Department to investigate, and while we were there, we found someone actually living in that shelter. On the left, it's a photo of junk that was in one of the side yards. So I scheduled another abatement. Uh, this is what the side yard looked like after we moved all the junk, and then the backyard. So, going to highlight a few significant cases. This is what the Red Onion looked like before the fire damage in 2012. It has remained vacant since then. The current owners purchased the property in 2017. In November 2023, code enforcement opened a case for nuisance violations in the neglected building. Last May, I sent a final notice stating that demolition and cleanup would satisfy the code case. In July, the city served the owners with a lawsuit, and in August, they applied for and were issued a demolition permit by CED. So knowing that demolition was imminent, this is a photo that I took in November. And this is from a couple of weeks ago. It looks very similar to that now. They still need to remove the foundation, but the building has been leveled. Along those lines, uh, this is a case, sorry, a few doors down. It's the old dental office that was purchased by its current owners in 2018 and has remained vacant. In December 2023, code enforcement opened a case for nuisance violations in the, and the neglected building. In June of last year, I spoke with an owner about the necessary corrections. He agreed to demolish the building and clean up the property. In August, they were issued a demolition permit by CED. So it's not a coincidence that both of these buildings got demolition permits and tore down at the same time. They are different LLCs, but they have overlapping ownership. So when I discussed what he would need to do for the Red Onion, I mentioned that the dental office would likely need to go along the same lines. And this is a photo that I took in November from the back of the dental office. And this is a couple of weeks ago after it was leveled. Again, they still need to get rid of the This case was opened in May of last year due to sewage flowing under the house and into the yard. We were informed about the issue by the tenant and a plumber that she hired, who was later kicked out by the owner. The property was found in violation of multiple codes, including an illegal ADU, unpermitted work, lack of a rental business license, and uninhabitable conditions. The owner and property manager both appealed to the hearing examiner who ruled in the city's favor. The case is now pending in Superior Court. So, uh, I apologize for this photo. This is sewage being pumped through a hose, and that hose actually leads to the fence line with the neighboring property.
I just ask, um, did he have renters in there?
Yes, he did.
Did they, did he get any violations for allowing renters to live like that with our rental code?
Many, yeah.
So the courts found, did that go to the?
The hearing examiner found for the city, they're appealing with Superior Court.
So is there any, um, I'm just curious, do the renters get any money back? Do they get any, is anything?
That would be a civil matter for them, as far as getting money back. Um, this, I didn't actually go over this in this presentation, but after they moved out, they broke their lease, they moved out. And then someone came in to discuss the property, and it was their new tenant. So, we, um, our building official, Matthew Gissel, deemed the property uninhabitable. It was red-tagged. No one can live there now. So.
Interesting.
Um, no one is allowed to sleep in, in that, either of their structures at this point.
Thank you. Just, I'm just curious how that works.
Yeah.
And is there any environmental impact, then, too? I mean, did it go into the neighbors? I'm trying to see, figure out where on 57th this is. Did it go into neighbors' yards?
It's unknown. As far as environmental, I believe Laura Reed, our stormwater, um, specialist, she looked into it, and, uh, it looks like since it went into the ground from an ecology standpoint, um, there won't be any follow-up. It's, it's more up to us to monitor it.
Thank you.
Okay. So, these photos are from the same property. Subsequent inspections revealed additional violations. On the left is an electrical box. Whether or not you're a licensed electrician, I think you can see that there are some issues there. What you can't see is, right above my head, is where three wires connected that were dangling from the walls by a wire nut. Um, I assume they were live. In the photo on the right, there is an open junction box, but the bigger concern would be, this was an illegal addition. Uh, that seam that you're seeing, uh, that's somewhat vertical, uh, that's where the roof for the house originally ended, and then the addition was put there. It was not sealed correctly. There was significant water damage in the walls and mold growing behind the drywall. Then there's Kings 3. Uh, in February 2023, our building official, Matthew Gissel, opened a code case due to missing permits. They were doing renovations on the building. In June of last year, I sent a notice of violation, and then in September, a final notice. In December, the, December, the owners contacted me. They wanted to negotiate a settlement on the fines, and agree to a schedule to correct all the violations. We came to a settlement. Uh, the building will either need to come up to code or be demolished no later than March 6th. The other violations need to be fixed as well, but the biggest concern being the building.
Sorry. I, actually, I met this owner by accident, um, a few years ago, and, um, I noticed now when I drive by, it's for sale. So.
Yeah.
Will it be, they'll purchase as is, and they'll immediately take it down? I mean, buyer beware, and.
Yeah.
All, all that, but.
We have a process in place for if that happens. So they are allowed to sell their property, even with the violations. But the violation would need to be signed over with a notarized affidavit. Um, both seller and buyer would need to sign it and bring it to me in order for a violation to be signed over. Um, I believe, let me check. I believe we actually recorded this on their property, in which case, um, the title company would know ahead of purchase that there are violations. I don't see it on this list. Um, regardless, th- they're well aware, uh, that they would need to take that step. Otherwise, if they don't find a buyer in time, yeah, they'll, they'll have to demolish it. They have initiated a demolition permit.
Have we done any liens on people not getting up to, um, um, I, some cities just go in and take it down, and they put a lien on the house and say, "This is what it cost the city," and.
I would say, not yet.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a couple laws on that that could be.
Um, I could see some of our cases going that direction, but to my knowledge, we haven't done that.
And, so, since I have the mic just real fast, and I have already talked to the police about it, but if we, do we actually label a house dangerous? And if we do, um, what does the city do? I know what the police told me they do, but I think there's other options, too, of, um, that can be identified. I know there's one house that I get phone calls on pretty regularly. Um, and they don't think that anything's being done. And so they've gone in and they've talked to different people, but, um, once a city declares a house dangerous, what, what do you do on your side? I know what the police do, but I don't know from having you move to Christine's group, um, what you would do. Because one factor is, is if it's a dangerous house, I worry about you going up there without, you know, people get angry and they get upset. And, um, do you bring a police officer with you? Do you, you guys work together on stuff like that?
I'll start the first question. So we do have chronic nuisances. That's how they're labeled. Uh, this house that was abated, um, might be the one you're talking about. Uh, we have a court order saying that we can go on that property anytime to abate nuisances. So that happens on occasion. I believe this was the third abatement for this house. So they, they're well aware of the process. Um, if I feel that there's any safety issue at all, absolutely, I bring the police with me. I've done it a few times. Uh, otherwise, if it's just a situation where I want someone to witness what's going on, I'll, I can bring in somebody else from my department, and I have.
You, "dangerous" is what the neighbors are telling me, like, but, um, more of a nuisance? What if it's more dangerous with, um, you find out, maybe there's something going on in the backyard, but from the front yard, you can't see it? And there might be illegal activities going on? Is that more for the police to figure out than being a nuisance?
Yeah. If it's a criminal activity, it absolutely should go to the police. Um, short of that, if it's a code violation, like a nuisance, a property issue, a zoning issue, then if we can see it from the street, I'm not standing on anything, that's fair game. Um, or see it from the right-of-way. Otherwise, neighbors can send photos of, like, over the. Otherwise, neighbors can send photos of like over the fence, whatever they want to do, like that they have a lot more leeway. But people can send me photos of what's going on in their neighbor's yard. And then that person, once I open a code case, would have to demonstrate that it's been corrected. They would have to find a way that would satisfy me in order to close the case.
So they actually have two routes then? They could go to the police and then if it's more of a nuisance, they could come?
Yeah, and then the police and I can send each other. We could send each other cases if we find that something is more appropriate for one or the other.
Thank you.
I would add to that, if there is a building that's unsafe, we currently have, sorry, a situation where we'll red-tag that. And in the case that Laura showed you, one of, one of the properties, basically, we've said it's a safety hazard for no one. That's, we, we affectionately call it sewer house. Um, then because of the multitude of health issues, there was a child that was living in that house as well. Um, then we will try to make sure when it rises to that level that, um, people cannot, um, go in there and be in that structure until those corrections are taken care of. But like Laura said, if somebody's doing something in a backyard that is, you know, dealing drugs or doing illegal activities that rise to the police level, then we're going to work with them to try to take care of that. And absolutely never going to try to send anybody, um, Laura or anyone otherwise if we think that there is a safety concern without an officer.
Me, um, Sean, one of our former, um, council members in the Red Onion picture. He's the little guy on the side with the bag. But, um, it was on Facebook and I can't remember if it was on the city site or another site that I'm on. But people were saying how sad they were about the Red Onion being torn down. And there were a lot of friends of mine who used to work there. And, you know, sometimes good deed doesn't go unpunished, but I was wanting to show him some of those pictures that he put up here because most of them don't live in the area. And so I, I just thought it was kind of ironic. I'm so sad it came down. I remember the special sauce. And they're all lovely people, but I'm like, oh. So if you see that.
Have more photos.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I have a comment on Kings Three.
Yes.
That, um, I, I am a real estate broker and I, and their listing has a beautiful picture of a apartment building.
Yeah.
That, that makes it look like you're buying that instead of that.
Yeah, it's all smoke and mirrors. Well, they, they are aware that they will be potentially upzoned. So they, they're selling it with that in mind.
Okay. Cause I know the, I, 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 yeah. But it doesn't say that on the listing. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a couple of questions. Uh, the first one, I think you've answered mine with your slide 34 in terms of direction that you'll be coming to us, because that was going to be my question is, which is, you know, this presentation always frightens me because I think to myself how fortunate I am. I have awesome neighbors and I think I'm an awesome neighbor. But to realize, man, that's not everybody's story in a city that we have some influence over. It's like, what can I do to empower you to keep this moving, which you're doing a wonderful job? And, and if we didn't say it, welcome and thank you for moving over to the position. Uh, but if there's anything that needs to be expedited, because it says you bring things to us, but I'm also like, you know, if we can need to expedite in the sense that we got a lot on the docket. I don't want these getting pushed back because they seem, uh, I don't want things less tangible at all, but just part of the process. Well, just trying to make sure that you realize, I think everybody would agree is expedite some of this stuff because, uh, five years ago, we had none of this felt like, um, to be able to, for you to be able to move on it. And now you're just giving us the results and then we're seeing, now they just got to move the foundation. I mean, what a wonderful statement. Uh, after years of seeing things being just dilapidated, to your point, that your friends out of the area don't know what's happened to these spaces. Uh, the other one's a bit of a tongue-in-cheek, which is, how many chicken violations have I heard? Or have you been experiencing?
Yeah, I saw that question coming.
Yeah, of course, has to.
I've had one complaint.
Okay.
It was about geese.
Oh, I didn't see that coming. Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's what we just wanted to play out. I mean, it was a big thing. Uh, the last one is selfish. Uh, slide 35. Is this our city from the top of the tower looking basically, I mean, is that Lake Union or Lake Washington?
That if you go up high enough, you can see both bodies of water.
Wow.
Uh, I am so glad you noticed that. I took that photo from the water tower.
I thought so. I, I just was focused on it and I, 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 I shared this story before, but I'm going to share it now because it's like, wow, you don't get to see our city like this very much. I have a friend who I went to grad school with. She's from Taiwan. One time she came back after years of being gone and I drove through our city. And I was coming up over 230th. I came down from what Kmart Hill we call now, coming up to my spot. And she was all quiet. It crossed over the freeway, which now you'd see light rail go underneath. And then all of a sudden she said, oh, I get it. You drive through a forest and it opens up to a city. And I had never really thought of it that way. And then again, you look at this, what all these wonderful giants living in, that we get to live next to. Um, so just putting that out there, what a wonderful view. Thank you for sharing these lifetime photos. And my last point is, how do you get the council up there? I think it's long overdue that we haven't had a tour from this view. So I mean that one seriously. So somebody work on that one.
I mean, after hours, I can make it happen, but we'd have to check it.
You're talking to the right guy. No more need to be said.
They never, they never took my keys away.
You need to sign a release, uh, councilmember Woodard.
I never signed a release, I'd like to point out. But I, I do get hazard pay every time I'm up there, so I would be happy to take anyone up there. Yeah, it's, it's double pay, so. Well, I have one more slide, but I'll leave it to you to read it. Just how I feel. I'll, I'll, I will be bringing amendment suggestions, I believe, February 13th. As, as we're actually putting all of the code to the test, find places where the code can use a little bit of tweaking or help. So, um, look forward to it and thank you so much for your support. It's, it, this would be impossible without it.
Thank you. Any, anyone else wants to? Oh, councilmember Payne Donovan. Go ahead, Rory.
Thank you, Madam, and great presentation. I, I just had a, a quick question about, something that I, I, I hear about that I believe is more or less in, in the realm of code compliance, which is, um, accessible sidewalks. I was reminded by this, um, the other night. Um, you know, after, after dark, somebody trying to navigate their way home, I imagine, on the street in a, in a powered wheelchair, um, sort of not taking the sidewalk where there was, you know, clearly overgrown shrubbery. And, uh, you know, I, I think the condition of our sidewalks is, is one thing, but, but especially if, um, there's not the room for those wheelchairs or, um, you know, baby carriages or, 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 you know, folks even pass by each other. I think generally I've noticed that, that an improvement, um, in shrubs and trees being trimmed back so they're more passable. But, um, thinking about our vulnerable, or not vulnerable, or, or, you know, any, anybody who walks or rolls on our sidewalks. And, um, so I wonder if you can speak a little bit about, um, how that fits into your purview?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we have had a few cases come in. Typically, that kind of case would come in with a complaint. If I see that a sidewalk is being impeded, that it's more than something minor, then I will take the initiative. I can say, working in public works, um, it's much faster when public works knows about that because they will send somebody out that day to trim it. If it's going over the sidewalk, they are able to do that. Certainly, the, the same goes for tree trimming to allow garbage trucks to pass, that kind of thing. Uh, I have been dispatched many, many times to do that. So it, it can be two-tiered. Going forward, it can go to me in order to work with the homeowner. If they, if they agree and they, they want to comply, great, it can happen very quickly. If they don't want to do it, or if it's a home um, with a tenant, with an owner who's out of state, which is often the case, then it could take a little bit longer. So it, we can easily go both directions with it by checking with the owner or tenant, or checking in with public works if it's more urgent.
I appreciate it.
Is that because it's in the right of way? Uh, who, councilmember, who wants to be first? Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. I thought, just, I love this slideshow. This is my favorite. It really is. And, and the progress you've made, just from, what, May, did you say?
Yeah.
Uh, is so tremendous. You get a gold star by me. Cause, cause I, I swear, I saw you out looking at the shrubs and bushes and trees over sidewalks or somebody in code compliance. It was in the summer, so it would have had to be you.
It's just me. Yeah.
Yeah, because then, uh, a neighbor to the north and a neighbor to my south got notices. They had to have stuff cut back. And they did it right away and, and I even lent a hand. But it's good to let people know, hey, this is, needs to be taken care of. And, and that's minor, except if you can't walk through there. But, uh, I love the, the buildings, uh, the Arctic Circle. Well, Red Onion and then the Danish, um, thing getting taken care of. Uh, because that really was a big eyesore. And then what else? Oh, and I recognize another house there.
I bet I could guess which one. Yeah.
I walked by it every day. And I often wondered about it. But then all of a sudden, there's big reds, uh, signs on there. Do not do anything. So I love it. So anyway, I really appreciate the work and the effort and, and just shows really good follow-through. Thank you.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you both. Very nice to have you here and congratulations on the new role and thanks for jumping right in. Um, I did have a, well, want to thank you. I mean, I appreciate that you worked in a raccoon infestation to your very first presentation here. I think that is highly appropriate, uh, for, for Mount Lake Terrace. Um, but a couple of questions. I guess I'm curious about what sorts of data we track, particularly in terms of, um, nuisances. Do we have data on like, how many of those are like city observed nuisances? That then we go and, and, you know, address versus complaints that are filed by somebody in the city? Do we track that?
No, but I could compile them from memory.
No, 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 no. Well, and really, I guess where I'm going. And so my follow-up question of that really is, you know, around demographics and like, I mean, I'm curious if like particularly like our aging population is more impacted by nuisance complaints. And I'm also concerned, I think we've had a couple of comments on neighbors. You know, I think councilmember Woodard mentioned he has great neighbors and councilmember Ryan sounds like a great neighbor. Um, and I have great neighbors who very much like, you know, when something needs to be done and maybe hasn't been done, they just jump right in and help one another versus picking up the phone and making a complaint. But I think we also have people who visit us sometimes who are not going to be the neighbor that lends a hand. They're going to be the neighbor that makes a complaint. And so I always worry and it's been one of my questions and concerns when we've passed new, um, kind of restrictions or, or expectations of our residents in the past around who ultimately does this impact and are they impacted disproportionately? And so I guess I would love to like, understand like, are, are we, are we out in the city and like, being like, whoa, these are the highest priority like nuisances? Or is it like, this is the guy who's called 10 times this week about his neighbor who is maybe two days overdue mowing their lawn? And so I guess like, I, I think for, as a council member, that would be helpful for me to understand. And then if we did collect any sort of demographic data, I mean, I, I think that would also be, I think potentially helpful as we think about how, especially if we're looking at new potentially recommendations in code, like just thinking about those in a way that really is thoughtful, um, particularly in terms of unintended consequences.
So I can address that, all of that.
Yeah.
As far as demographics, I intentionally don't collect them because I don't collect the information of the person who reports it. They, there's really no such thing as anonymous reporting unless the person makes the effort to make it anonymous. So if somebody emails me, unless it's a dummy email, then later, if there's a public records request, whoever made the request is going to see who reported the issue. But if people call in, I don't write down their names. I don't write down their phone numbers. I, I don't keep that information because it's so accessible. Usually in my notes, I will put whether or not I observed it or if it came in. As far as the demographics of who is being reported, I think about that a lot actually, because while I can make every effort, I, I don't even know somebody's name when I see a violation. So it's, it'd be really difficult to abuse that power. But that, the same doesn't go for somebody reporting it from the outside. So all I can do is make sure that, uh, that kind of thing doesn't come into play. Um, if you're talking about seniors or, um, people who may not be able to take care of properties as well.
Right.
Uh, I thought that that was going to be a lot more frequent. But we've really only had a couple of cases that have come up of nuisance violations where somebody was physically having issues with doing it that could not meet a deadline. So usually they ask for an extension, they get an extension. Great. Like not a problem. They want to wait for help to come in. I had one resident, um, he had graffiti on his fence. I let him know, uh, he is a senior citizen. He's, he's up there. And, um, he said he wouldn't be able to do it. Luckily, I know people in public works with a pressure washer and they got it done right away. So in that kind of instance, it really comes down to what is appropriate to, for the city to come in and help. Or outside groups, but we are going to research outside groups to help with things like landscaping maintenance for people who are unable to perform it themselves more often than not. Um, when it comes to overgrown lawns, which I know come up a lot. I've, like really overgrown, like four feet high? It's usually vacant homes owned by somebody not in the area that I have to track down.
Okay. Okay. No, that's helpful and I think alleviates some of my concern. I guess I would love, especially since it sounds like you'll be back in front of us here at some point, like it would be helpful. I mean, I think the more information you can give us on both impact and ways to like mitigate impact to people who, you know, not for, not wanting to, to, to be compliant, but just because of other challenges, that's hard to do. Um, would love to understand what resources are there. And I think that's both in terms of like, you know, the, the lawn care and whatnot. But also, I mean, so I think you talked about there was a child in that house, um, that we red-tagged, right? Um, and I can't even imagine having to navigate that as a family where you're already dealing with this nightmare scenario of living somewhere that is, you know, has all of these awful things happening and then all of a sudden did not have a home at all. Um, like I, I can't imagine that. And I'm not sure what they did or whether we were able to provide them any resources or point them towards resources. But I do think that that would be an incredibly helpful thing for us to ensure that we have, you know, information, um, if not actual resources that we can provide to people who are in these challenging situations.
Yeah, we're in the process of that also with that family. Um, Laura worked with them a great deal. So, um, you know, we're never going to go in there and say, all right, everybody out. And, you know, um, displace a family. Our approach is we're going to give you every opportunity to take care of this. And like Laura said, we're researching, um, some outlets for those situations where we have a senior or we have someone physically unable to do something. We're also going to come back to you. Right now, our fees are kind of one size fits all. We think there's a better approach to say, hey, life safety, that should be our number one priority. Maybe if the grass is a little bit long, then that's really not our number one priority. So prioritizing, as you saw on- as you saw on, on the slides, we have some real issues out there. We have some very unsafe conditions and things going on in the community. That's going to be our highest priority. And then these other things, we're going to try to get people there, but we're never going to take the approach that we're, it's all or nothing, or we're not going to give you several bites of the apple. In saying that, in the past, we gave so many bites of the apple, and we had no follow-through. And what you saw is these problems continued. We're not doing that anymore. When we say, this is your last opportunity to do that, we mean that now. And so we have to. I think words getting out that, oh, several people have told us, oh, you know, you guys were around before, and hey, nothing happened. And, and we realize that, and I think it's a part of an education process. But when people see buildings coming down, when people see things that are getting cleaned up, hopefully, that just builds on itself of like, hey, something's going on. So we hope that's going to happen. But, you know, our mantra is, we're going to help you try to get there if you're willing to do that.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. And I do appreciate all of the work, getting particularly some of these longstanding significant issues around the community cleaned up. I know, I appreciate it, and I know it is much appreciated by the community. And maybe this is a conversation for another day, and maybe more for you, Kristi, but I think in terms of like, improving the community overall, so now we've taken these steps and we've got these buildings torn down, how do we get something built in their place?
The first step, I think, is exactly that, is we have to make those spaces available to make them easier to develop. And if we have, you know, these derelict buildings that have kind of sat there, and also, hey, I want to build next to this building, and look at all this stuff that, you know, I really don't want that. So, you know, it's, it all kind of rolls together, I think. So. Even though I loved the old Arctic Circles as well, you know, I talk about it all the time. I grew up with that as well. So, I mean, it's sad, but also, there's a point where, you know, we have real problems in those buildings, and we have people living in there, and we have, you know, different things happening. So we just want to make sure we're taking care of that.
Well, thank you. Thank you both. And Laura, very nice to meet you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other hands going up.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you know how much we appreciate you and the work you've been doing. You know, we, as you probably heard, this is a point of frustration for the council, for certainly mounting frustration with the community and the council for lack of action and moving forward, making progress, and it's, it feels good to finally be in a position and have the person, the right person in place, making that, you know, doing the follow-through and, and seeing real progress on, on this action. And just following up on Councilmember Murray's point, I, I think what we're looking, what we are interested in is the circumstances, and understanding a little more about the circumstances of those that are not complying or falling behind, and just, and, and finding, it, it sounds like what you're doing, we appreciate that, is, is finding, recognizing which cases are trouble, problem cases, and which ones are just lack of ability, and finding creative solutions to be able to help solve problems for the people that are lack of ability. And so, and so, again, understanding the circumstances and finding approaches to be able to help solve those problems while at the same time making sure that we're cracking down, following through, making things happen on cleaning up and abating nuisance properties. So. Really appreciate what you're doing. Just recognized, and, and we can't thank you enough.
All right. Anyone else? Well, we'll wait until your next, we'll, we'll see progress. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we have three more presentations. Okay, so do we want to take a three-minute break before? I, I see people wanting to take breaks, so. We're back in session, and next we have a review agreements for the Waters and Sewer Comprehensive Plan Consultants with our Public Works Director, Gary Schimmick.
Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you, Mayor. Just, back to the last presentation was awesome. We talked about a water tarot, and I have a, I have a proposal for you. How about a day after I pass my probation, I'll find a way for all of us to get up there. Love it. Okay, so that's, just saying, I think it's April 9th. So I'll get, I'll get working on that.
Has to be a nice, bright day.
Yes, that's all hope. That's a beautiful view up there. I want to get up there. Okay, so thank you for having me here today, talking about, we're requesting you to authorize City Manager to sign detached agreements that we have here for both our Water and Sewer Comp Plan. And the reason I wanted to come and talk to you today to present this is that I, you know, I, I bring some good things to the table, and this is one area that I have a lot of familiarity with. So I've directed and provided oversight to Water and Sewer Comp Plans for the City of Issaquah, City of Redmond, Seattle Public Utilities, and then actually, as a very young computer modeler, I have done the water system analysis for Crystal Mountain, and then the City of DuPont. So this, I've been doing this for like 30 years, so really excited that we're doing this here. So again, just what, what these plans are, they're very similar. One is for water, and one is for wastewater. Our wastewater contract is with Consoor, and our water is with RH2. And they're both required every six years. And two, two real things, two, two major elements really that I wanted to stress, one is looking at existing conditions. Like, how are we doing right now, and what are the biggest issues that we have and, and can tackle with our, with our CIP? A lot of them we are addressing right now, but it's, it's always good. We'll be talking with the crews during both of these to make sure we understand really what's, what's happening in the pipes and in the pump stations, and if there's something we're missing. But the bigger, you know, the bigger reason for both of these two, and why they're required by the state, and why they, they are, you know, do cost a lot, is there a lot of computer modeling done to look at future conditions? You know, we don't, we're not going to have a lot of tense land, you know, changes in actual, you know, land cover, but population growth and others were substantial amount. So we're going to be really looking at that, those growth scenarios, and what it's going to do, potentially do to our system, in both wastewater capacity and water demand. And then these will be coupled with work that we're doing with, on rate studies for both water and wastewater, so they'll be put together. This is, again, focused on the planning and the modeling and that, but they're going to be coupled together. So that is why I'm here, and, you know, again, I'll be involved with this very much. But Mantrung, our senior utilities engineer, will be leading these, working directly with the consultants. So if you have any questions.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. Really, just my own edification. You know, I'm looking at a 53-page document and a topic that's probably, I'd be underwater. But nonetheless, is it like maybe Exhibit A, the one if I really just wanted to understand what we're talking about?
With the scope of work.
Yeah, that's probably the best one to focus on. Okay. I was just trying to understand.
Right, a lot of the contract is, is contract language and such, but the scope of work is really what you want to be looking.
Okay, so Exhibit A, perfect. Yeah, I already saw that part, yeah. But, but I do, I, I love your work. I mean, genuinely, Public Works, I know you're not supposed to have favorites, but that's my favorite. So I just really want to know as much about what you all do. So I might have questions after getting a better scope of Exhibit A. Thank you.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you. And yes, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. And I'll be relatively quick, I think, but my question here was just around, it talked about infrastructure for water. I'm curious if the plan also includes, so we don't provide our water directly. You know, we, we, you know, contract for water with Alderwood. And so I guess I'm curious, is that part of this plan in terms of that? Like, I just, I know it came up this last year when we were looking at potential cost increases of water and the impact on residents, and I guess just in thinking longer term around just availability of water, I guess, is that something that's part of this plan as well?
Yeah, great question. I was hoping that was going to come up. I was going to touch on that at the end for another reason, but thank you for the question. So yes, looking at both, you know, we'll talk about the water just for a second, just, certainly we get it from Alderwood, but then it's upstream Everett. So yes, there's both, and we need to look at that because that is our supply. So anything, and then with wastewater, again, part of our, our flows go to Edmonds. The other part goes to Shoreline, then King County, and then Briar and King County. So we have a lot of partners here. So both the documents, yes, well, there's actually a chapter dedicated to regional coordination and what that means and rates and all that sort of good stuff. So yes, we'll be having that. And the other reason I was going to bring this up as a reminder, on February 13th, right before Valentine's Day, you will be seeing Phil Williams, who is, you know, used to be here, and is now with, again, interim in my position with Edmonds, talking about wastewater, and John McClellan with Alderwood Water District. And I think you had some questions, Councilmember, to Jeff Knighton about climate change and stuff, and we're going to cover that. So everything, you know, we're going to hit those topics in this report, but then our partners are doing stuff as well, too. And if anything they're doing is in relation, we'll, we'll be covering that as well. Because it is a, you know, it's a symbiotic relationship with them. We have to be, we have to be working with them.
Awesome. Thank you.
Certainly.
Anyone else?
I'm just wondering if there's any way we can prime the pump to get our citizens ready for what these costs will come in at? You know, how much, when we didn't do our six-year review on time, how much they escalated? And with the, the price of growth coming in and the water need, and especially our sewers, it's astronomical. And so this is the part that I was whispering to see, we don't want to see these numbers, because it's, it's going to be really a tough one.
In terms of, but I think, you know, what I, what we're, what we're planning to do with, with these, and what you'll read, if you look at this, is, is be, be developing, and in concert with the rates, different packages of how aggressive we want to be with addressing some of these, how much risk we, we want to take on. So that's a way we can, I don't know if that's priming the pump, but we'll, we'll be bringing that to you and the citizens so you can see the choices to be made, because there are. It's like how much, you know, if you, if you really are risk averse, okay, then let's, you know, then let's, let's get things done, taken care of. But we also, what we're going to be doing with these two is, well, what, what, what actually do we have control of? Right? And we really want to look like that. So how, what if we reduce our water consumption? Right? Even what if we kept the same consumption, but we doubled our population? We could potentially do that, but that would take, you know, working with Kristi, right, with some development and being, you know, low flush and other things like that. And then who, who are we sending our wastewater to? Like, do we, do we like the split? Is there possible ways to change it? So those are some of the things we want to bring to you. There may be, you know, how, how are we going to address that?
Yeah, and hindsight, looking at Brightwater now, maybe it would have been better to come through the city and had some more construction done through the city and had some more things done.
Right.
So, you know, reaching capacity in Edmonds. And we did go a lot with how to conserve water, how to collect rainwater, how to, you know, but it's kind of like when we would talk to the garbage waste management, it's retraining yourself on how to recycle again and doing different things. And this is where the cost of the city, which is a service we have to provide to our citizens, and this is where I try to explain to people, this is why we're not a business, because everyone goes, just run it like a business, run it like, and I said, if we were going to run sewer and water like a business, we'd be making money off of you and charging you a lot more. And so, you know, we do have to think about our reserves, but on 66, I think that sewer project wasn't it, it was very small, but it was like $3 million. And I remember they used to bring in the concrete sewer pipes and drop it on the table and say, this is where rats are coming up through. And it was made out of cement, and you're like, okay, but it's still, people, I mean, it was very graphic, but we still have to be cognizant of what we charge our citizens and the water they use, you know? And it brings me back, I asked if our fire chief could come in and talk about potential fires and water flows, because there have been a couple cities in Washington State that could have gone up in smoke. And, and looking at what we do with our water and how to prevent it, and, and, you know, if I was going to go a little bit deeper, look at how many people we do bring into the city and how packed we do it, and do we have enough water and
Exactly.
to, to, you know, stop those fires from happening. And so, you know, it's just kind of like everything. It all has tentacles. Like Steve was talking about that woman, or the young girl that had a crisis. And to me, they're all crisis, you know? But it's, it's how you see it. And, and it's just kind of like with homelessness and water, you know, it's just so many different tentacles that you have to address. But the bottom line for our citizens is keeping them safe and not having to have to pay what they really can afford. And so, you know, at this point, the three options, and we've gotten those before, is going to, you know, be the real deal that we have to look at. And, and that growth, I think you hit that on the head, and so I'm glad you have experience in that.
No, and I really, just really appreciate what everybody's saying here. And I think what, what's hitting me, too, is when we, when we get to the point of presenting, we really need to be clear what, what drives things, right? Because it's fire flow for water, right? It's, it's fire flow based on the population that we're going to have. And, you know, that's a good thing, but that also means you're, you're, you're building your system for a very, you know, high intense peak, peak demand. But again, that's safety, right? And so that's, that's something, you know, what I'm hearing from you, too, is helping educate, you know, what these systems are designed to do, and then, okay, that's there. Now we have choices, how we're going to get there. But the system has to be able to deliver fire flow on this case so we don't burn, right? That's, that's the case. So, yeah, but I definitely can commit to bringing all that back to you. That's going to be very exciting. I love this stuff.
The exciting part is, you know, the cost, you know? So I'm glad you're excited about it. I like to see that sparkle.
That came up here, too, a little bit, is the climate change, and that's, we'll be documenting that, because, again, what, there's so many models out there, and we need to do something reasonable, right, in the middle, and just be explaining to you what, what forecasts we're using, because again, that's going to drive a lot of, a lot of the demand. And, and flows as well, too. So I think that's, just really getting from this is that, you know, when we do present, just take time to provide context to you and, and our customers. And well, of course, one thing that's actually in here, too, when you read our, our scope, education and outreach, we are, we are going to be talking a lot to, to you and the community as we go through this year. It's not just, we're going to come with the results. So you're probably going to see us two or three times. It's, that's built into the scope, because we, you know, again, like, we, we want to have checkpoints. Here's where our, here's where we can go, how, how are we feeling about this? And then we, we kind of continue to go on. And I've done that in all the other cases that I mentioned, except SPU, and I wish I would have done that. It would have got a lot better. Where we, if we would have had a lot more public education and outreach, just, that was 15 years ago, and it wasn't as important. But at Redmond and Issaquah, it got to the point where, you know, we're, we're hand in hand, and, and that's why they take a little bit longer.
And, and what we're talking about, I, just faded lake, I believe, that's like, is, I mean, it's a big, huge, beautiful lake, but is that enough with the growth coming in? And with growth, you've got all the water runoff, I mean, it's just unbelievable. In California, they're wanting all the, before it rains, to get all the ash off as much as possible, but they want it to go down like the sewer drains so they can clean it instead of into the ocean. And things you would never even think about. There's so much, those tentacles, not that, you know, Steve, I wasn't comparing, you know, the trauma. I was just saying how, you know, we all think differently sometimes or act differently. So, I mean, there's so much to it, you know, especially now, we're just talking about snow in Louisiana, Florida, you know, seeing it in South Myrtle Beach, I think it was, or something, you know, it just, different changes. So, you know, we might get drier up here and not even have enough water in the lake, so.
And that's something we'll definitely be, definitely explaining in our assumptions when we come next.
Okay. I don't see anyone else. So we'll.
Yes, we'll see you on the 13th.
On the 13th.
With my dear friends, the Water Business. Clarify, there's only some calendar for approval authorized. Yes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So now we have Carolyn doing the next two. The next one is the review agreement for Tyler Technologies' finance software.
Yes. Thank you. So our accounting software is called Munis, and it's owned by a company called Tyler Technologies. called Tyler Technologies. Right now, that software is hosted on premises, and Tyler will no longer be supporting software in that way. And so, we will need to migrate it to the cloud. That is actually part of our IT strategic plan, as well as to migrate as much of our software as possible to the cloud. So, it's in alignment with that plan. And we have budgeted for this in our budget that you approved. So, the cost of this work is about $160,000, and we are proposing that this contract be put on the consent agenda at the next regular meeting.
Okay. Anyone? Anyone have any concerns, questions? I don't see any hands going up. It's something we need to do anyways.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so, the next, are we ready to go to the next one? Okay, and so, that would be the review and appoint, review and appoint members for the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. So, as you know, the city has a Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to allocate lodging tax revenues for activities and projects that will boost our economy within the city. And the committee's structure and the operations are all governed by state law. Currently, we have two members of this committee whose terms have expired, and we would like to reappoint them if possible. They are Bonnie Mercer and Dale Newman. Bonnie represents members, she, members Friends of the Arts, and Dale represents Nile Shriners. The second part of this request is to appoint a council member to serve on this committee. And in the future, we will work on making sure that these appointments occur with our boards and commissions appointments, and that the city council appointment occurs in your January meeting, where you select council members for various committees.
So, do we talk about who the council member is going to be?
Sure, if you'd like to do that.
You already voted on me a couple months ago.
Yeah, I was going to say that. I thought you were already on there.
I had consulted with the clerk on that, and we didn't recall that being part of the conversation.
Tried to look it up on the minutes, too, but I remember Kyoko saying, or Air saying that, "Since we're talking about it, why don't we just do it now?" And that was, and I didn't bring all my notes with me tonight, I could tell you what day it was, but you'd have to go back and listen to the recordings.
We can listen to the recording, and the first meeting in January?
It was prior to that, because I've already, in December, I was already invited to the meetings.
Okay.
So, that's why I remember.
So, maybe it was the November 7th meeting, because that's when we appointed the new members from the hotel?
I think we came up, there was four meetings last year that we talked about them. One was in December, one was in November, one was in February, and the other one...
Okay, we can look that up, and, okay, we can look that up, and I guess, just to double ensure that we're moving in the right direction, do we have support from the council to?
So, Mayor Portem has us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We can just make it official, so we don't have to go through the, looking through paperwork.
Yeah, we can just nominate.
And I assume we want to, you need a motion tonight?
I don't need a, well, I guess, we are going to make a formal
Appointment?
Yes, tonight, we're making a motion. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so, I'll move to reappoint Bonnie Mercer, Dale Newman, and Councilmember Sonmore to the Lodging Tax Committee.
Second. Do we need to vote? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. So, we have those three people reappointed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore.
Thank you. And just to let you know, the 29th is the Lodging Tax Committee.
Okay. All right, so, we're done with that. And next is the review of the February 6th meeting. We have a week off next week. Five mon, five, oh, no, five Thursdays. You see five Mondays, but now it's, all right. And so, we've looked at the agenda for that, it's already printed. Do we have any council comments? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I suspect we've all seen the email from our colleagues at Maverick Cares and their concerns about some of their casinos, Dragon, Red Dragon, whatever the new name is, yeah, has officially apparently been on the chopping blocks. But they also mentioned the revenue loss, so we're hoping that we can give, maybe get an update on some capacity out of that email of what that means to us, which also includes, because it sounded like it's making its way through the legislation, not, it is established legislation. So, if there's something we can do proactively, perhaps, if it's not too late.
Did you want to, okay. So, I don't think I got that email, but, yeah. So, we can probably...
I was going to say awkward.
I can check with the city manager, but I haven't seen it.
Oh, well, I will forward what I have. I didn't even look at the two line, I was freaking out from the words, so, I just presumed I was late to the party. I will forward it to the city man, to deputy city manager, to forward it to everybody.
All right, thank you. All right. Anyone else for council comments? I don't see any other hands going up. I think we are wanting to go to bed, or to leave, at least. All right, so, next is adjournment. We're going to adjourn the meeting.